I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. We stand one nation, thy God, indivisible, with liberty and Okay. Shall we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Wall and Councilmember Murray asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Wall and Councilmember Murray.
Second. Does it move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There are excused. Thank you. Next on our agenda, do we have any late changes to the agenda?
We do not, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And then so next is public comment. Do we have any public comment on anything that is not on the public hearing tonight?
We have John Blakeschmidt. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Hi. John Blakeschmidt, 4905 219th Street, Mount Lake Terrace. I, oh, first thing I noticed coming down the street right up here, the next block, heading south in a southbound lane, that dip's getting worse lately. Have you noticed that? Right up here, half a block up, coming down, you go down, you go like that. It's getting worse. Something's going on there. And I would like to say, I was wondering why. I've came in many times and said, I haven't had a cop on my street in the 30 years I live here. And when I say that, I would think somebody here would maybe say something to the cops and say, hey, you gotta go patrol there once in a while. Does that make sense to anybody? Nobody's done that yet. I've been coming to these meetings for 20 years or maybe more. And it's the same with, well, I gave a councilman my phone number and he was going to find out. I've bitched about the rats before. And they're spreading from one house in my neighborhood down the street quite rapidly. And he said he would look into it. Well, he kind of did, but he gave the phone number and told a member of staff that they should do this and get ahold of me. Well, that member of staff didn't do it. And that's not very good. I don't think. Maybe you guys do. And I talked about dogs being having barked from the same neighbors. They get dogs and they always bark for 30 years. They bark every afternoon. And I mentioned that to the old pet controller, the lady that goes around and does stuff. And she came over and I think she talked to him once and it didn't do any good. And I talked to her and she said, oh, barking like that's not bad. And I mentioned that to you guys before. That is bad. Somebody should say something to her. That's her job to do that stuff. And it's the same. They got all, the rats are there because they've got, they did have 10 bird feeders. I think maybe they only have eight or nine now. And that's where the rat problem's coming from. And so I tried another approach. There's a code that says if three people, three houses like in, right in the area, call in and gripe about something like that, the city has to at least look into it. So I called her and told her. Another neighbor of mine called her. She didn't return his call and she still hasn't returned his call. So the third guy says, why try if they're not going to pay attention to us? And that sucks bad. Somebody needs to talk to the people that don't do their job. My opinion. And thanks for listening to me. I can't remember anything else, but there probably is. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
No one else has signed up in person or to, no one signed up online to speak and there were no written comments this week.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Who would like to do number four? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to, on the agenda, number four, consent agenda items A, B, and C. To approve, please.
Second.
Does it move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next, we have a presentation on the fire risk by, on fire risk by the South Sohomish County Fire and Rescue with our Fire Chief Bob Eastman. Oh, I guess not. No hold it.
Good evening. Hi. Thank you for having us. I'm Assistant Chief Sean Maxwell. Chief Eastman had to travel back to Minnesota to help, help his parents. So he is not here. But myself and Chief Anderson will do the best job we can. Him and I have both been serving this area for 30 years, so we know the area well. In fact, my last station before I left the line, it's been a long time, but it was Mount Lake Terrace. So I really knew the city really well. And I will start. Our presentation, I'll give you kind of a quick overview. We haven't spoken for a while. Quick overview of what we do and then it'll end and we can talk about some of the wildfire risks. And that works out well because I started in the wildfire arena in the 80s. So you guys can ask lots of questions. Okay. So we, I guess I want to express for the Fire Chief and for all of us, we truly believe that we are your firefighters. And even when we get to them and talk about, it was your firefighters that went down to help with fires in California, which was part of the catalyst for this meeting. We, we provide so much more than fire suppression. We have marine response. And as you know, in Lake Ballinger, we often go on calls there. Sometimes we go on fires there, on the, on the island there. Technical rescue, hazardous materials, the majority is emergency medical services. We do a lot of community paramedicine. Those are helping people that have higher needs, that call 911 a lot and they're just not getting their needs met. And when we started that program many years ago, our very first patient that we served, which was a really neat story, was in Mount Lake Terrace. So this is a map of our area. We have 15 fire stations protected by 350 uniform firefighters. So overall, and I'll talk about Mount Lake Terrace specifically. We serve about 300,000 people across the 57 square miles of South Sohomish County. These, this is some Mount Lake Terrace specific data, just to show you the work we do in your city. And under the subprogram, you can see that we structure fires, our fire prevention, our Fire Marshal's Office, who Chief Anderson oversees, is very effective. You see, we have less than 1% of working structure fires. We have a lot of other fires. Some of them can be brush fires or dumpster fires or car fires. And then the super majority of what we do, you'll see, is ALS and BLS. So ALS are the advanced calls where we send paramedics. And BLS are emergency medical technicians, where you even be maybe giving breathing tubes or giving medications. And then you can also see the breakdown the mill. We ran 2,552 EMS calls, 367 fire calls, and 216 other calls, rescue service calls. One of the, one of the performance metrics we look at is we look at our cardiac arrest survival rate. So when somebody's, it's more than a heart attack, their heart actually stops. And when we go and we do CPR and we put the breathing tube in, we do IVs, we give medications, we shock them. We are, we are very proud that we have, when we bring people back, there's a very, there's a national standard, actually it's an international standard that meets very strict criteria. And everyone throughout the nation puts their data into Emory University. And so this is not our data. This is a national database. And when we go out, there's actually double the chance that we're going to bring your loved one back under these, the Yudstein criteria. And we're, we work incredibly hard at that. And then I have a video here. We will, it's, it's glitchy. We'll try it. But this is, this is what we practice and fine tune. And you'll, you'll see that when you see a lot of rigs pull up and a lot of people, this, this kind of explains why.
High-performance CPR, it's essentially picture-perfect CPR. Everyone knows what to do. There's not a lot of talking. We need to have someone doing chest compressions. But we have to rotate that compressor every two minutes to ensure that we're still getting quality compressions. We have to have someone leading the call.
Have the controller person set up on the left side of the patient and then compressor is always going to be on the right side of the patient. And then you have someone at the airway.
And then you need someone to be a liaison with the family. Some people to be arranging a way to get the person out and get them into the medic unit and get to the hospital. You know, to fill all those roles, you're looking at around nine people a minimum and 12 is way better.
Anybody who's not there time, we want to give them the best chance. And not just of getting pulses back. We want to try to make sure that one day that they're going to make it out of the hospital.
We put so much emphasis on it, on, on being one of the most exceptional things that we do here at South County Fire, because it's saving people's lives, right?
The call to come in, for units to be dispatched, for us to get there. It takes a few minutes. And that's a few minutes of not having oxygen to the brain, not have oxygen to the heart. The more people that know CPR, the more AEDs that are readily available in the community, the better outcomes are going to be for people.
All right. Thanks for watching that. So some of the other quite unique services that the Mount Lake Terrace receives through South County Fire is we are the first and the only fire department that carries whole blood. So if you have a serious trauma or a serious medical event, nothing replaces blood. There's nothing else that's going to save you. And we are the only fire department in the county that carries whole blood for a serious traumatic incident. As I said, we also have our community paramedics. And one of the, our, one of the first people we served, it was really, it was a really special story. It was, I think she was 70 or 80. This was 10 years ago. But she was our first community paramedic patient. She had called 911 80, 81 times. And just, she'd gone to the hospital, social workers, fire, police. We'd all been there. She just wasn't getting the help. And, and so we sent out our community paramedic. And he said he had a really nice conversation and a cold cup of coffee with a really sweet lady. She ended up, she was a Air Force veteran and retired from Social Security. And after an hour of understanding what she needed, he drove her down to the VA, set her up with services. And she's like, someone finally saw me. And she, she was off and running. And so that's what, and we have so many stories like that with our community paramedics that are working every day in your community, helping those people. We also have a second tier, which are community health workers. And they'll work on less complex needs, social needs, mental health needs in the community. People that are calling our, our police and fire. And we're just, it's not an emergency. We're just not the right service for them. So now we have specialists that work with them. And then we also have a flagship program with the University of Washington, where we go out and people who are addicted to the fentanyl and the opiate, we get them onto treatment and medication right there in the field. And we, we've had a 75% success rate in them converting to treatment and staying in treatment. So we have some really special and effective programs that are, they're unique to fire departments. Very few fire departments do this kind of work, but it's, it's what's needed in our communities. And so we're very proud of that. Other part of it, like we said, we know that we need as many people as possible to, to be able to intervene with things that can, can kill someone in five minutes. And so we have a special program that we created. It's called ACT Program. So if somebody has an opiate overdose, we train them to use the Narcan, the antidote, how to do CPR or bleeding control, which is a tourniquet. And we have, over the last few years, trained 25,000 people across the regional fire authority. Most first aid programs teach a couple hundred people a year. And so we, we changed it for what society wants today into, people did not want to go to eight hours on their Saturday to get first aid, but they're happy to go for 45 minutes. And so that's, that was a big, big change. We do a lot of other free services, smoke alarms, child car seats, bike helmets, safety assessments for the home, window locks in the summertime. People, kids can fall out of second story windows. And then lots of classes for elderly, as well as disaster preparation. And then for the, the topic that, that we're asked to come down for, what is the wildfire risk? The fire, the wildfire risk here still remains low of a, of a, of a conflagration where we start moving quickly. We are seeing the environment change. We do see more brush fires than we used to 30 years ago. As you can see, we have purchased a brush truck. I think we've had that a year here too, Chief. Two years now. And so we actually are starting to buy the equipment. And we do use that, we use it a lot on the Fourth of July and different times when it gets really hot around here. Also, every one of our fire engines, so every fire station has this pack in the mail. We have specialized wildland tubes and specialized hoses. These are smaller hoses that can branch off and go out farther than you would need just in a house fire. With brush fires, you're going much longer distances. So we have smaller hose on it. It's the same hose that the Forest Service uses on wildland fires. We also, on the right there, we did deploy down. We sent two engines down to the California fires. So your firefighters were down there helping with those fires. And it, it actually also helps our firefighters gain valuable experience as, as things change for us here. We also have people on the command teams, the overhead teams. I'm one of those people. And we go out, because you have to have a whole command team over thousands of firefighters, obviously, to organize the fight against these wildfires. So we have specialists within our organization at the command level. And then we are equipped and gaining experience in the field level. But right now, we, we have not had any serious events. But, but we are seeing more, more events on, in Western Washington that we used to only see in Eastern Washington. And with that, I would, I would take any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Sonmore, did you have?
Well, thank you for being here tonight. It so happens that we're talking about fire code again and talking about, so I'll start with that one since we're all set. So does the fire department still feel that sprinkler systems under 5,000 square feet is something that we should look at? I know we're doing the international code, but I know that you had a big spike in that years ago. And we had talked quite extensively about how we should sprinkler homes.
I think we lean more on what is in the IFC or the new, or the new one that'll be adopted, you know, for the next year, that we're comfortable with that. I, I don't want to stray away from the international fire code. I want to see us stay online with that and see that consistency throughout all the cities in the RFA. And I feel like the conversations we've had with Mount Lake Terrace and our fire code official down here, David Sherman, would probably agree that that's probably online, that's probably online with the city as well.
Yeah. And I was just reading it tonight and it talked about existing building structures and alteration repairs or changes to the occupancy or the classification of the work shall be determined by the building and fire code official. So just heads up, that's the question I was going to ask for you later. But, and, and sprinklers on kind of case by case. But what I really wanted to get into is, of course, the fires. But one thing before I bring up that is for years, especially with Chief Ed, we've always talked about fire humps, I guess they're called now instead of bumps. But always saying that that's not a good policy. But I notice more and more cities are doing that. And our traffic is going to get heavier, especially with light rail in, going through the neighborhoods. You changed your mind on maybe the types? I see plastic ones now. They used to all be cement and they'd be laid in the road. But is that still detrimental to getting a fire truck through a neighborhood or a street?
Oh, you're, you're talking about the barriers that we've seen before in some of the neighborhoods back?
Oh, just a road bump, hump.
Oh, 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 oh.
We haven't talked about that for years. And I think that will be something that we're going to be having to talk about because of all the traffic and the population growth that's supposed to pay for itself. But I think that's going to be something that we're going to have to look at because our traffic's like more.
So like a barrier or a speed bump type scenario? That won't affect our, our vehicles going through. We're not going to go over those at high speeds. And anytime we enter into a residential neighborhood, our drivers are taking more precaution anyway. Not, it's, it's not always about going the fastest to get to a call. It's also being mindful of the safety in the neighborhood. You have small children. You have a lot of people in the community that are out walking around, pets and whatnot. And so the seconds you save by using your accelerator to get there sometimes isn't the best option. And our drivers are trained for that and the safety of that. So I don't think the speed bumps would affect us and they would be aware of it, especially if they were a color that they can see and they, and they would recognize that. Or firefighters that are stationed out of the city, I believe, being familiar with the area, would probably know where those were when you put them in. And I think that your building code official and our fire code official together would inform the crews and make sure they're aware of it so we can put it also into our pre-incident planning.
It's just good education for us because we haven't talked about it in years. So I was just curious, because we have streets like 48 that are just straight shots. And, you know, for years, I see kids going up and down. 44th is another straight shot. Not that I want speed bumps on that road, but, you know, there'll probably be more lights eventually. But anyhow, so thank you.
I'm sure we can collaboratively work, work with you. If you need a little more research on it, just let us know.
Right. And we just talked to our person that oversees the roads and he doesn't see any problems at this time. But I think that'll be changing pretty quickly, especially us being here so long and living off those streets that people are getting to light rail. I know if you're late, you want to go a little faster sometimes. And so, and we've had two fatalities on that road. But there, one was speeding and one was something else. But the reason I really enjoy that you're here and California, you know, comes to mind, but everybody now, it's yesterday's news because, right? It doesn't affect me. But it's something that we really haven't seen. And it's going to leave a long impact to the area down there. And really will change it quite a bit. Malibu used to be lovely and I know it's going to change. And there's going to be a lot of differences there. And now you've got North Carolina and South Carolina, with Myrtle Beach under siege. I don't know if it's gotten to the city, but close. And, and then it's hit home for us. Lake Stillicum, a few years ago, the neighbors received evacuation notices and they didn't know what to do. They really seriously did not know. They were not prepared. They didn't know what to do. And that fire was fast and furious because it was very hot at the time. And the only way it got out, of course, was with firefighters and helicopters. And then you also have Bonnie Lake and Lake, or by Sumner in Bonnie Lake in 2021, they had a neighborhood wildfire as well. So we can't say it doesn't happen here. And so the reason I'm, I'm asking about this too is what I've read, you know, is 90% of fires are caused by humans. And the biggest culprit in a house fire is, of course, the kitchen. And California alone in 2023 had 7,364 wildfires that only accounted for 13% of United States wildfires. And I almost fell over on that one because I'm thinking 7,000 and that was 13%. And so with that, and then I think it was last week or the week before, we just had a woman die in Linwood with a house fire. So it does hit close to home. And we did talk to Alderwood Fire District. And of course, you know, what more could they say is there'll never be enough water to put that out. And of course, that makes perfect sense. So I'm not sure if you guys are going to use foam in the future or not, and that's a different story. But one of the things that I thought, you know, we, we do have a newsletter that comes out and we do have a disaster readiness center. And I remember when we first started that up years ago. And one of the conversations was if we, we have staff, employees staffing it and it's an earthquake and their family is dying, are they going to stay there? You know, it's just kind of like, I can't imagine what it would be like being in your position. I don't know what I would do. But, so it's really teaching people how to care for themselves and to look at that. And I was hoping that the council would consider donating one newsletter to strictly talking about how to prepare yourself for disaster, you know? And, and that even can involve domestic violence. I mean, to me, that's a natural disaster. And looking at different things. But we're always talking about how we can help people. And it would be really nice to, I don't know, maybe have a collaboration or get data from you guys on, you know, putting it all in one location. I know I get your newsletters too, but I'd like something to hang up in my house or have there because, you know, we just had an earthquake up north and we had one down south. And sometimes I don't, I feel like we're dodging a bullet for all these years. And I have a feeling, you know, at some time, whether you believe in climate change or not, you still have to get prepared. And I'm talking to myself and I still am not prepared. But I think at least one thing that we could do for our residents is tell them how to pack, how to have a bag ready, CPR classes and where to get them, the Narcam, our, our center here, you know, just all the different programs, the smoke alarms, and something really for the elderly. And I know it sounds all kind of silly, but if you have that, and hopefully residents would use it, keep it, I don't know, we used to keep stuff by the phone years ago, but keep it wherever you have, just so we dedicate one newsletter or something that would prepare people. Because talking to the residents down by Lake Stillicum, they were horrified. And they, they really were calling each other, asking, I just got a call to evacuate. Should I? And they were questioning it. And then they were questioning whether to leave on their sprinklers or their hose. And, you know, I don't know what the answers to all that. I think it would help, but it would be nice to have something, you know, that our city could just do to do something. Because all it takes is wire of fire, whether it's a park or somebody's home, and these gust of winds. And we saw in California how it just goes. In fact, somebody who's worked for the city, they were talking about, they knew somebody down there and some, I don't, ambers came through the ventilation system. And I was like, what? You know, it's things that you never think of. And so it would be really nice to always have a good relationship with our firefighters and having you guys come here. But not only that is maybe having, you know, CPR at City Hall or something. But I'm just throwing that all out there because I think it's really high time that we really look at our management system in a way of educating our people. I know it's nice to put a little blurb in there, but if it's something that has a little blurb, I don't like a lot of paper clutter, so I get rid of it. And during a fire, I'm not going to have my computer there and looking at stuff. But, you know, it's something I'd hang on my refrigerator or something and it would educate us. But things are changing and it's nice to be prepared, not only with fire. And I'm sure there's some other things that we could throw in there. But, you know, that's something that, you know, having our parks and the way we're building buildings now and, and looking at how close they are is something I think that we need to tackle together. And I'm sure you're, I'm preaching to the choir here, but there, there's people like me that aren't, aren't really prepared. And we have some elderly people that, you know, we have a, a center right here that I know very well. And, you know, they're, it's quite high and they only have a couple elevators on each side of the building. And so, you know, it's nice to be able to educate people on how to get out of their homes. Years ago, we used to, there used to be big sales on ladders. You'd put out your window. I don't see that kind of stuff anymore, you know? So throwing it out there.
We, we would. We, we would welcome partnering with you. We do, I think we do put some stuff into our newsletters, but we offer disaster preparedness classes and we could maybe host some down here. We can work together on a, I know our outreach team would love to work together on that. So we are aware of that. Historically, you know, we've had the slow moving disasters like H1N1, the, I mean, we actually worked with Ebola patients and then COVID. We are, we sustained and went through, those are big disasters for us too. And we organize well around those. We try to prepare for those. They're just a different kind of disaster, so it's very much top of mind for us. And for the wildfire risk, as I said, we're now buying specialized trucks. All of our trucks are equipped. We have 24 of our firefighters that are certified as wildland firefighters. And so we're, we're doing a lot to prepare for that, but working with you and getting the word out to the community, I know, I can tell you, our outreach team would be excited to work on it with you.
Leslie anymore. I, she's not there, but.
We miss Leslie, but we have, we have some really neat people that are, do really amazing work that I think you'd be excited to see what we could do together.
Yeah, and it's, and it's right, it's hard to take eight hours out of your day when you're running home from work, cooking dinner, getting your kids ready for bed and, and it's something that has to be quick and kind of easy unless, you know, the retirement maybe even, and want to do it that way, but it's something that it's easy to say that we're going to do, but to get into everybody's houses is really hard. That's why I just thought of the first vehicle as the newsletter. It just gets into everybody's home, but the disaster preparedness, we used to, our council used to go to disaster preparedness events and, but we haven't done that for years. And so it, we were made to do it. So it was like, you know, it felt good to be almost made to do it, so you had to do it, but it's just thoughts.
It's a really good thought. Go ahead.
For evacuation purposes, we'd be working with your local PD with Mount Lake Terrace here and we can request state patrol to assist as well. And what we do is we come up with a game plan using a command team on those evacuation routes. And then we would have state and local PD jurisdictions help in routing people and giving that guidance on which way to drive, which way to get out. That, that's not only for wildland, that's for hazmat, if we had a big hazmat incident or any event that required evacuation. They put it, the Department of Emergency Management for Snohomish County would put out a, a warning for that, that would be broadcasted. I, I get you're going to get people who ask, you know, does that mean me? Does, do I need to evacuate now? We get that with apartment fires even, where people are still inside. Does that mean me? Do I leave now? That, that's a, that's a reaction we're going to get, but we're not going to leave houses unattended when it comes to checking door to door if we have to. And in California, they had to do the same thing for the Palisade fires. And hopefully we're quick enough to get that done and, and we're effective at doing that. Our crews are also very highly trained for structural protection and trying to cut off events. So even though they're not wildland trained, they understand the movement and behavior of fire to be able to help cut off that, like that fire from, from going if possible. Once you hit 40 plus mile an hour winds in the right conditions, it's all about getting out of there quickly. There's not any amount of water we will have or a risk that we would put our firefighters in because it's a blowtorch coming at you like a freight train. And, and it won't stop until those winds die down and the fuel dies down. So it is about evacuation. I think Chief's right, we can put together something, we at least can have Shauna Rie work and help to get some information out there that way. Just know that some of the stuff too, we, we do work on, but it's never picture perfect and we're always having to adapt to whatever emergency we have.
Anyone else? House member Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo, thank you for being here as well. I think I have a couple of different questions and let me first start off with an embarrassing one. What is, if any, your relationship to Snohomish County Fire? In particular, I'm thinking Sultan Fire Department. That's not you all, that's a separate agency.
Sultan? No, there, there's, I think a little over 20 fire departments in the county. So, you know, we are, we're basically from, you know, Mill Creek, South Everett, everything down in this part of the county. And then Snohomish has a fire district. There's Snohomish Regional, which covers Cathcart, Lake Stevens and Monroe. And then Sultan is their own fire district. And there's fire districts that work their way up the pass.
Okay. So I have to admit, and I don't know if anybody else has learned, I did not realize that. I conceptually understood that, but didn't realize that. That said, I kind of want to back up just a little bit and say, one, it never crossed my mind, you all did wildland firefighting. Like just genuinely never crossed my mind. I think of your structural and a lot of other medical emergencies, but wildland has never crossed my mind, which is frightening to say, in hearing your presentation and thinking about coming in, I was thinking to myself, okay, so what's the new expectation on our fire departments? And I'm going to say it with our U.S. Forest Service, as I brought it up last week, being gutted, quite frankly. And, you know, Sultan is in Snohomish County, so we can't look away and be like, oh, good luck with that, King County, that's our county. So even though they're not our agency, we're going to respond, which would stress on your expectations of serving quote unquote us, right? Because we should be responsible to all of our neighbors. But nonetheless, I don't know if that's a fair question to say, is that starting to work into your calculations or are we too early?
Oh, yeah. And, and there's an entire, there's an entire system where we'll go to, like across the whole county, we all have a mutual agree, mutual aid agreement across the whole county and we have interoperability with communications, training and everything. So with the Bolt Fire, which was the big wildfire, we all sent crews up there, like the Oso Mudslide. So we, when, when the big thing hits, we all come together and work on those together. The, I think there's a little bit of state DNR land with, within our South County area. I don't believe there's any Forest Service land. But then again, when that fire comes out, we all work cooperatively. Like when we go out on these wildfires, we're, we're all together with Bureau of Land Management, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Forest Service, National Parks. We all come together and we all share resources on those wildland events and work together.
Yeah. Yeah. It was too long. So no real question on this acknowledging that we're, you know, different part of the equation, I suppose, especially with our climate change. You know, we are used to masks now, but we needed masks before COVID because we had the fires, right? And now we actually have legislation in place to protect our folks outside during smoke, but I think that's just going to keep increasing. And then again, like I say, at some point, it's going to come back to all of us in the form of dollars, right? I mean, you can't keep operating at the same level if the world's changing around you. That seems like a fair understanding.
Very fair.
Which is an awkward way to bring us to the RFA. I would love to hear any feedback you all are hearing from Mount Lake Terrace since we've annexed in to the RFA and I mean that from our residents or anecdotally just other cities. I should give you a heads up, next week I'll be on a panel talking about our experience. So I already have an opinion, but I would love to hear yours so it could influence perhaps my understanding as well.
I can, I can only speak, I mean, we, we actually think we have, from our side, we think we have a wonderful partnership. It's very seamless. I guess no news is good news. I mean, we just have a great relationship with your organization and we feel like we, like I started this out, we feel like we are your firefighters and we're proud to serve you and we work amazing with your police department. Yeah, we just can't come up with anything bad, sorry.
And I promise you, I'm not looking for anything bad. That's why I just want to be able to say, and I had this conversation last week where we mutually agree how this is going. So I don't know if you wanted to add anything, but that was.
No, I was reiterating what Chief said. I think it's been a great partnership. We're working on plans of reevaluating service all the time, not just with Mount Lake Terrace, but with everybody and how we can do it better and more efficiently. Often that leads to addition, you know, call loads go up, things happen where we hit benchmarks where we have to add staffing, we're doing things, but I feel like we're doing a really good job of trying to plan for that. In the prevention world, I'd love to see down the road, more people here to help the fire code official and help your building code official out. It's a work in progress and I don't think it'll, it'll ever stop and I do enjoy the relationship we have with you.
Thank you both.
Yeah, we are doing a lot of planning right now because call volumes are going up. We have rapid growth, rapid change and we're actually working on a roadmap for the future right now because we're becoming a metropolitan area. It's just what we've become and, and with that, we have different risks and different, different response hazards. And so we are actually intensely planning for that right now.
Okay, so I know that you have classes and you said they're only 45 minutes long now. Where can the public find a list of when, when and where these classes are?
Well, I don't want to give you the easy answer. I'm sure they're all over our website and, and I'm sure we host stuff in, in Mount Lake Terrace as well there. It's a very active outreach group, but we can, we can work on better informing you.
Okay, and we can probably let our citizens know too in our newsletter.
Yeah, and we can also find out, you know, from the website or in conversation and share that on our social media sometime late this week or early next.
Yeah, because when you, when you look at that pie chart, fighting fires, house fires, that teeny little V there, and most of it is for medical purposes. And, and you came to our, the mayors and, and spoke about, and was, was that in, in one of those lists that you had there? I was trying to see whether or not that was in there. That service that you provide, that you talked to us about, which I thought was absolutely fantastic.
The community paramedic?
The mental, the pairing, the pairing of you and a, not a psychiatrist, but a.
The social and mental health needs. Yeah, that's our community paramedic and our community health workers.
Okay, I thought that might've been, but you, it was under a different name.
I know that they are in your community every single day helping people.
I, that is something I really, really want people to know, to know that that actually is being done in our community and we have help like that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I don't think there are any more questions than if we are, if we are done, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us.
And next is the presentation on the housing update by the Alliance for Housing Affordability with our AHA program manager, Chris Collier.
Thank you so much. Going to be a hard presentation to follow. Let me get technology set really quick. I'll share screen. There it is. Sorry, it's been a long day. I hope this is coming through for folks on Zoom efficiently. Thank you again for the invitation to speak to the city council tonight, give a quick update. I'll try to keep it to 15 minutes or so on where Mount Lake Terrace is on housing affordability and how that is progressing and how that fits into the larger tapestry of Snohomish County. I'm a quick refresher on what the Alliance for Housing Affordability is. It's all the cities listed here coming together to create the Alliance for Housing Affordability, the program manager position who provides the members with data analytics, technical expertise and outreach and education through council meetings, planning commission meetings, community outreach and much more. The goal of the alliance is to assist the members and the communities they represent in understanding and responding to the shortage of housing affordability in Snohomish County. Whoops. And its impacts. So to get right to what is that issue, starting with the summary of Snohomish County, we'll zoom into Mount Lake Terrace in just a couple of slides. This is the net difference between new household creation and new housing unit creation in Snohomish County, including all cities. By year in 2003, you see we built 1,106 more housing units than new households were created to occupy them. So we generated a surplus. Those units did not disappear in 2004 and so they added up. If you started counting at zero in the year 2000, you have 3,000 surplus housing units by 2003. Continue to have a surplus until you reach 2019 when behind this chart is the number of new units and the number of new households. There's a gigantic separation of, between household creation and unit creation where we have a lot of people moving to Snohomish County is, is the explanation. And so that erodes any surplus of housing units that we have. We have recovered since then, but that is almost exclusively apartment construction as I'll show in a couple of slides for Mount Lake Terrace and across the entire county. It's by and large, we've been building apartments almost exclusively. What this does to price for ownership opportunities is in this brown line. This brown line is the median sale price adjusted for inflation across the entire chart to $20.24 values for a single family detached home only in Snohomish County, where the median price has risen, again, adjusted for inflation from $362,000 to over $820,000 in 2024. That's approximately year end 2024, missing a little bit of December. Most home purchases aren't done with all cash, however, and so the real barrier, the real you must be this tall to ride line is how much money you make as a household against your loan terms. So let's say we're putting 10% down on this median house. We have a 30-year term and we assume, make some assumptions for property taxes, right? We take the actual property tax rate, an assumption for insurance, and then you factor in interest rates. So this yellow line is the required income for that median house. And you see that it's risen dramatically, in particular since 2022, and that is almost exclusively, it's in part due to rising prices, it's also the interest rates went from about 2% to 6.8 and change where they currently sit. And the required income for a house is now $194,000. To afford the median house, single family house in all of Snohomish County, a household needs to make $194,000 collectively to be able to give, be given the privilege to take a loan out on that home and pay the mortgage. Now, if that line matched our median household income, there would be no problem. And of course, we know that isn't the case, that median household income has not risen in step. And so the degree to which these two lines diverge really is the start of housing unaffordability in Snohomish County. And it rolls downhill from there to townhomes, condominiums and to rent, which just, so you can see the proportionality of rent here on the chart, you can see how rent has changed relative to median household income. The rent has also been rising much faster than household incomes in Snohomish County. So interestingly, rent stayed about flat, the zero net change in rent from 2000 to 2014. After 2014, rent has risen by 50, 55% or so, considerably faster than median household income for the county. And this is a story repeated with some variation across cities in Snohomish County. I can provide that certainly from Mount Lake Terrace if you wanted. So what cost what and who, what cost what in 2024? We'll look at single family detached homes on the top of the table and townhomes and condominiums combined on the bottom of the table, the third row. And over each city, you see the required income, again, a 10% down payment, 30-year term and so on. You see that it requires $271,000 of household income to purchase the median home in the city of Edmonds, that's within the city limits in 2024. You see Linwood and then saving, not the best for last, but then on to Mount Lake Terrace, we have the required income in Mount Lake Terrace to purchase is between 125 and 178. Townhomes and condominiums and single family detached home. Again, that's the median house. There are some that are less, there are some that are more, that's right smack in the middle. City of Mill Creek, Uncle Tio, City of Everett, Bothell. We have now four cities that are over a million dollar median sale price for a single family detached home. And then Snohomish and Lake Stevens to round out this map, make sure that we cover the whole map here. And you can see just how you compare against your neighboring jurisdictions, near and far. I did not include Woodward because they are far off of this chart at about $2.5 million median sale price, if I recall correctly. So typically, if I had more time, I would be talking about occupations that can afford this, these prices. One thing I'll say, just without putting it on screen, is the profession of median, of median. without putting it on screen, is the profession of median of dentistry, general dentistry in the Seattle metro affords you a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars a year of income for the mid the mid-career point in the profession. That's the median income for a dentist doing general dentistry, not specialized um oral surgery and things like that. Um, and you can see on this chart, on this map, a general dentist in the middle of their career isn't able to buy a house in southwest Snohomish County. They might afford a townhome or condo, but that's about where they'll cap out. And a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars general dentistry, there's a lot of occupations and people that we appreciate and think are good neighbors make that make less than that, that make our society run and much more. So just for context. Takeaways from the county, uh, prices are rising again after a cooldown in two thousand and twenty-three. That line graph, the brown line decreased. It went down in two thousand and twenty-three, um, but now it's heading back up in twenty-four and probably into the future. Required income, however, has never slowed due to interest rates. And there is a typo on screen. It should say one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars a year is the required income. Um, so the required income has never been higher today than it was in the last twenty years, uh, twenty-five years. It has never been higher, harder to own a house, required more money to own a house in Snohomish County, including Mount Lake Terrace, and it didn't years past. Rents uh came down in two thousand and twenty-three, for two thousand and twenty-four, January to December, uh, rose by a fractional amount. Data that I'll cover in just a minute uh indicates that rents, you can expect rents to rise again in two thousand and twenty-five. So that that is my anticipation for twenty-five. The reason for this is you can see the a huge production of um apartments in two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two and a little bit more, particularly in Linwood in twenty-four, that you can see the market has been slowly absorbing that rental vacancy. Um, those have been leasing up and that was bringing rents down. That rental vacancy has been absorbed and rents are now starting to rise again. Um, the median household income remains stubbornly low. It's just a point worth reminding us that in spite of all of this, household income is almost ninety thousand dollar median, household income is median, or ninety thousand dollars shy of the median required income to own a single-family house. What is happening in the city of Mount Lake Terrace? So now we're switching away from the county. We're looking at what has happened in Mount Lake Terrace, the history of the city. This is this bar chart represents all single-family residential units that have been built in the city of Mount Lake Terrace that are still standing today. This does not mean that we built no single-family residential homes in nineteen forty-three in Mount Lake Terrace. It just means that there are none left from that year. And with that recognition of of recency bias, that a lot that was built in the fifties is no longer here. Uh, the fact that the city is still majority in terms of the age of its housing stock of the nineteen forties to nineteen seventies vintage um is noteworthy in something as you look at implementation and operate opera operationalizing your comprehensive plan. Um, that is something to be aware of, is that as you talk about preservation, in part, you're talking about preservation of that that age of housing stock. Now, what does preservation mean? I don't mean it never changes, but just that housing stock is something that's noteworthy in what Mount Lake Terrace is. Um, and that there is not much more being built, which probably is no surprise to anyone in this room right now, but just so that we can see the numbers. Um, that what you can barely see is manufactured housing uh in blue. I'll back it up so you can see just a little bitty bit of blue. That's your manufactured housing. That's primarily mobile homes. It includes also manufactured homes on a site that they might own. You can see in as I look at this in Snohomish County, you can see that manufactured housing really has its heyday in the seventies and mid to mid eighties. Um, and is basically gone. Now it's replacement of manufactured housing, but nothing new is coming online. So manufactured housing is well, there's a lot to say about that, but I'll skip it for time. Next, and perhaps more germane, is uh your middle density and accessory dwelling units. This is townhomes, duplex, triplex, quadplex units, and your detached and common wall condominiums, not your larger condominium buildings. You can see how that has emerged as a housing typology in the last two decades in Mount Lake Terrace. And again, uh, for context, you see that multifamily condominiums also had their heyday concurrent with manufactured housing in the seventies and eighties. And that is a major and noteworthy portion of Mount Lake Terrace's housing stock, but also of an older vintage. The takeaways that I get from this, um, again, Mount Lake, single-family construction was basically done by the eighties. And what has happened since then is likely infill development or redevelopment of existing single-family home sites, taking a one-story nineteen-fifties home and turning it into a two-story considerably larger structure. Um, that bump in two thousand and twenty-one is interesting. I don't have, I haven't investigated what that is exactly, um, but that is something that I found noteworthy and I'm I am curious about. It's on my to-do list of things to look at. Um, again, a large stock of fifty to seventy-five-year-old uh ownership units in the city. Well, the family condos were a major part of the city's production typologies in decades past, but that really ended in the early two thousands. And this is a unique case where you can see a specific policy change having an impact, and that is condo liability law that was passed in Washington State in nineteen ninety-nine, putting a significant burden of liability on condominium buildings, where in particular larger condo HOAs would have the wherewithal to file suit for under that liability clause. And it stopped happening at the end. We don't have them anymore. So I'll quit. I'll move on from there. Um, and middle housing emerges perhaps in the wake of that absence of um larger condo buildings as a typology in more recent decades. Moving on to uh, excuse me, what does this do to sale price of homes? In Mount Lake Terrace, this is the number of homes that sold for below a hundred thousand dollars. Again, adjusted for inflation to today's dollar values, basically nothing. You had very, very little. Uh, this is basically your mobile phone, mobile homes and manufactured homes in the city. One to two hundred thousand dollars. I'm taking this in hundred thousand dollar income groups so that you can see, oh, this is really where the action happened. You might find some rare occasions of homes selling for below two hundred thousand. It was more common in years past to find things under three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand. Four to five hundred, five hundred to six hundred, six to seven, seven to eight. And I'll flip through these a little quicker to get to this. Your one million dollar homes really emerge in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two. But generally, you can see how, starting in the year two thousand, you've got kind of the light blue and green, making up a majority of home sales in the city that are now a fractional amount of homes sold in Mount Lake Terrace in two thousand and twenty-four for what would be considered reasonably affordable prices. Uh, if you want to take out the noise and the fact that there are varying numbers of sales year by year, you can take this year by year in absolute values as a percentage, this kind of abstract art piece that's here, and you can see the um the percentage of total and how that has changed, the percentage of all sales and how that's changed in the city um year by year. And how, again, blue, green, purple have really vanished as uh those lower, more affordable prices, more affordable sales have vanished in recent years. That's that is the sales history of Mount Lake Terrace. And this is everything. This is manufactured and mobile home up to a single-family residential. This is every single ownership opportunity that exists in the city. The numbers, just giving it to you straight, so it's mostly something that you can look at after the meeting or before. Um, this is where we were in two thousand and fourteen. And then compared to two thousand and nineteen in, you know, five years ago. You can see how the prices have changed and the number of homes that sold has changed as well, with some notes on the bottom. For example, noting that, you know, most of the condo sales were multifamily and only one detached um compared to sixty-seven and eight detached or common wall in two thousand and nineteen. Again, the changing, trying to simplify and trying to make this easy to digest, but also recognizing there is a lot of variety under the hood here. Uh, what happened in apartment construction? This chart is fairly brief because I'm looking again just at the city of Mount Lake Terrace and how apartment construction has occurred. This is your smaller apartment units characterized by having five to fifty units in the structure. You can see that they're basically absent or disappear by the late nineties and with a a few in two thousand and eight. A couple of units in fifty to a hundred unit building in the eighties. Now you see something happening in the last four or five years. A little more, a very large building coming online. And something I do find interesting is that the largest three hundred unit plus apartment buildings, you haven't had any since nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen eighty-seven, if I'm reading my intervals right. So people are building really huge buildings. Well, actually, we did build bigger buildings um in decades prior, just for for something I found interesting. Let's see, uh, rental summary, just so again, just giving a quick update on what rental prices look like in the city of Mount Lake Terrace. I do a survey three times a month of all listings on apartments dot com. This is all Mount Lake Terrace addressed, not strictly within city limits, if Mount Lake Terrace address exists outside of city limits. Um, all Mount Lake Terrace addressed uh apartments in January and December, and then Snohomish County for comparison. You can see the Mount Lake Terrace on average has risen dramatically, mostly on the back of one and two-bedroom apartments in the city. But again, so the county ticked up very slightly, but places like Mount Lake Terrace, like Edmonds and southwest Snohomish County were rising more quickly. In terms of advertised price, that's not the final contract price, just what is listed if you're shopping for an apartment. Um, something to dig in further, the census data uh from two thousand and twenty-three, uh, what are we looking at for renting? The percentage of gross, number of renting households, the percentage of renting households, and how much they spent of their income on rent. You can see this is uh Mount Lake Terrace, starting at thirty percent to the right. So the rightmost uh four bars are what's called cost burden. When you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on rent, there's an increasingly likely chance that you will start to make hard decisions between other essential needs that you're for your household, whether it's transportation, uh, medical care, food, trans- transportation, certainly saving, is getting harder and harder as you go above this thirty percent threshold. And it's noteworthy that fifty percent or more is such a large category. Uh, and this is Mount Lake Terrace. Um, and actually, Mount Lake Terrace in terms of cost burden is not as bad as Snohomish County. Overall, in Snohomish County, this includes the city, um almost twenty-five percent of all renters, almost one in every four renter renters in Snohomish County spends more than half of their monthly paycheck as a household on rent. And one out of every two or so is cost burden. There's a one in two chance if you rent in Snohomish County, more than thirty percent of your check, your monthly household income goes to rent every month. Um, so this is for two thousand and twenty-three. This is true for two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-three. So there is lag here. This is the average across a five-year period. Um, two thousand and twenty-three shows uh increasing severity in Snohomish County. I don't have that data for Mount Lake Terrace because survey details. Um this is, oops, I forgot to animate this slide. My apologies. Um, walking you through this from the right, moving left, this is the number of renting households in Mount Lake Terrace who make over a hundred thousand dollars. You can see the a majority of them in that light blue on the left. Uh, make spend less than twenty percent of their household income on rent. They're fine, no problem. Uh, on down to um, none of them are severely cost burdened. As you go down the income scale, seventy-five thousand to ninety-nine, down and down, you see that dark blue on the far right of each income band start to rise and increase until it is by far the majority for households making under forty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So this is a picture of Mount Lake Terrace. Again, it's kind of spotty, uh, because there are, it's not a full, or Mount Lake Terrace is relatively small, and so you have some clustering, but um nevertheless, if you make under thirty-five thousand dollars a year in Mount Lake Terrace, there is a really good chance that you're um spending more than half your income on rent. And there's hundreds of households that that describes, four hundred or so. The conclusions that you can draw from this are that city and county prices are set to resume rising in two thousand and twenty-five. That's something that you should expect. Um, you may hear more about. Cities' housing production now rests in as a single-family residential redevelopment in terms of ownership. The question is into what? What is that redevelopment into? And that's, I think, something that your comprehensive plan really sets you up to discuss and take action on and guide. Um, below fifty thousand dollar your households are going to be are increasingly cost burdened, the lower down you go, and as time goes on, that will become more severe and intense. Eventually, displacement is going to prohibit them from living here at all. So it may actually be that you see those numbers go down simply because people have been financially displaced from Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, production of all housing units and types in Snohomish County and Mount Lake Terrace are on the decline. Um, for a time, I did not include a county overview. Um, but overall, county housing production is at its lowest point since nineteen eighty-two. We have never built fewer units in Snohomish County until you go all the way back to nineteen eighty-two, again, recognizing the recency bias that some things from built in nineteen eighty-two are no longer standing. Um, and so it's likely that we have actually built less in two thousand and twenty-four than any time in the county's history. That is entirely possible. I can't prove that. I wouldn't be surprised if that were true. Uh, same thing is true for renting apartment construction has halved in two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three, up from a historical high in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two. Uh, that production rate is going to stay low as interest rates depress and continue to hold down the construction of larger apartment buildings. The impact of the comprehensive plans and House Bill eleven-ten are yet to be seen. Um, so that's something that I will certainly be looking at the data for uh as we go forward for its impact. Global, national, and state events will definitely have a part to play in what happens. For example, interest rates, labor availability, um, a little trade war with Canada or tariffs, things like that are definitely going to be outside the city's ability to control. Um, and they will definitely be seen in this data as well. This is an issue in in final point. It's far larger than Mount Lake Terrace alone, but Mount Lake Terrace is an integral part of Snohomish County and definitely has a part to play for reasons that you're all as acquainted with as I am. So that is my presentation. I would welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chris. Does anyone have any questions before I? Okay, well, I'll
I have that effect on people.
Um my question just left.
I can just keep talking until it comes back.
Okay, go ahead, uh, council member Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, that was a lot of information and it's like, wow. So that was a very good presentation and uh you uh directed us towards it very well. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually kind of sad to see it and and the the money and houses and that. And when I look at that, I always think about when I moved into Mount Lake Terrace. And when I bought my house and my house is built in nineteen fifty-two. And so just, ooh, lots of pictures go through my mind when I saw this. So thank you very much for the uh presentation.
If I can take the opportunity to expand on that, it's, this is depressing. I'm, people at my office literally printed out a rain cloud, taped it to a stick and taped it to my desk. Because I always make people sad whenever they make the mistake of stopping to talk to me. And to try and uh get out from underneath that rain cloud, this presentation is also a discussion of opportunity missed, but one that we can still capture and realize if we take intentional action. Um, so as much as I'm a downer and this kind of sucks, taking action means that maybe a dentist can live in Mount Lake Terrace, that it will, that we will have nurses and doctors and teachers able to live in Mount Lake Terrace again. We will have a vibrant economy that doesn't rely on people driving fifty miles or further to get to work in the city. And that we, you know, taking action means that we are undoing some of that grim reality that this presentation represents. And so as much as it is a downer, I hope that you, Councilmember Ryan, and everyone listening can realize or see this as an opportunity that we can take action on to to realize, including our kids being able to live here. Um, it may maybe a struggle for our kids to live in the city of Mount Lake Terrace, but if we take action, maybe that's something that we can make possible once again. So as as much as it's a downer, which I totally recognize and I apologize for, Prozac did not pay me to make this presentation, but they should.
Well, I I know that you're you're just presenting the facts. You don't make up these numbers. And uh, what basically this was, was we're not building enough. People might think that we are, and yet when you actually look at the graph, it's it's showing you um what actually is happening. And I saw this earlier, which is why I wanted you to um show it here. And it it is very, very depressing. Um, and I don't know how we can get ourselves out of it, but we still need to keep building for the people that are going to be moving here, and that includes our own kids. And the more inventory we have, the more the 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 rent and the prices will stabilize. It will not go down, but it hopefully it will stabilize. Um, and and we're, uh, I think that our city is doing what we can to help with what is um uh what we need. And um, I don't think that we're uh as much a problem as as other cities might be, hopefully. And um, I just love your, I see your presentations here and at at other places, and I just really uh, I know that uh we we have a few council members missing tonight, but they will probably see this presentation as hopefully will other other people in the community. And um just really want to um thank you. I know that, and I also want to bring up one more thing, and that is the um I know that, and I also want to bring up one more thing, and that is the affordable housing part of it, that people don't realize, is that now that HUD is no longer in the state of Washington, what is going to happen to voucher housing? That is the, that, that is how we help people with housing, if they can't afford housing. That's, that zero to 30%. And if, if we don't have voucher housing in Section 8, how are we going to, you know, we, we will still fill our inventory because there's enough people that can afford to rent or buy, but that zero to 30% income range of people that really, really need the help, I don't know what we can do to help them, and that's something that I would like to work on because the state has mandated for us that we need certain percentage to be in that range, and yet, everything that we can do to help them is being taken away one, one at a time, and I don't know what we can do to help them. And I would like to, to have that become a future talking point, because this is going to be a huge disaster.
I can add to that, that there are approximately 6,000 households that are on the voucher program in Snohomish County. There's 4,300 in Hasko's portfolio, the Housing Authority is Snohomish County's portfolio. There are about 2,000 more under Everett Housing Authorities. That's a very approximated number. So if that were to go away, it's not at risk with the dissolution of District 10 this morning in the Seattle office, but it's pretty hard to run a voucher program with less than half of HUD remaining in the building. You know, that's 6,000 households that require, or rely on 70% of their rent being paid by the federal government, and before anyone, not that I would suggest anyone in council would say this, but for anyone that might think, well, that's fine, they just need to get a job, over half of the voucher portfolio is senior, disabled, or both. And to suggest that population is lazy, certainly let's take seniors who've contributed to the community and are now being supported by the community that they serve, that, to suggest that would be ghastly, words that are just, words would really escape me. So that's one thing that is an imminent risk, that's new and emerging rapidly, and for us to consider as cities, as the county and the state, we consider contingency planning, preparation for the unexpected in the future. Something that I wanted back up to, being a little less dramatic, is our production, and something you mentioned, Mayor, is that we have built considerable, considerable capacity in the past, and in Snohomish County, we actually built more apartments in the 80s and 90s than we've built in the last five years. And when people say, I've been specifically, in response to a presentation like this one, many years ago, I was specifically told, well, I don't know what rock you've been living under, Chris, I quote, but there's construction happening all over the county. There's too much construction happening all over the county, in particular referring to Linwood and activity there, and I wish that I had this information so I could say, well, actually, it's not as much as we used to build. And when people say, well, I'm scared of change, I'm scared of things happening, we can look to the past and see, we are changing slower today than we ever have in the last 30, 40 years, perhaps longer. Now, I, I don't say that to take, completely take away that argument and that reluctance, however, this isn't brand-new territory for, in the longer scope of history, for the city and the county and the state. Not that that necessarily makes anyone feel better, but maybe it does. I don't entirely know where I was going with that, sorry.
Well, and I just remembered VASH housing, the veterans, the homeless vets.
I think VASH is soon to be gone.
Yes, and, and that has saved so many, so many. Section 8, like you said, are disabled people, people who cannot work, and the, the elderly, the seniors, and the veterans, the homeless veterans, and so forth, so. I don't know what we're going to do, but thank you very much for coming.
My pleasure. Hope to come back soon.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so next is the review and public hearing and vote on the ordinance amending the Mount Lake Terrace municipal code to reflect the 2021 building code with Matthew Giselle, if I'm saying it right.
Give me one second to. All right, Madam Mayor, Council, it is, again, my wonderful opportunity for me to speak to you today. I serve as your building official, bridging the gap that we have with fire that just went on, and then housing. How do we make sure all these things are maintained in a safe manner, no matter what the price point is of a house? Our job and our role in the city of Mount Lake Terrace is making sure, no matter what the price point is, that all these houses meet minimum code criteria. One of the ways we do that is we evaluate the codes on a regular basis to make sure that they're getting adjusted to the current needs of our society and structures. And if I can actually get into presentation mode, this would look a lot better. Thank you. Okay. So today, mainly what we're looking at is we're not looking at amending any of our municipal codes, but adjusting our, the codes that we're referencing, and the Washington State already adopted codes. So 2021 building and fire codes became effective statewide on March 15th. We were all set up to come here and get our municipal code updated and changed, and then someone got hit by a car. Someone was me. So unfortunately, we're a little delayed in getting our code updated, but we have been making sure that all the current projects going through Mount Lake Terrace are meeting state of Washington code minimums. Objective of codes is to maintain compliance with state and local requirements. The city must adopt the 2021 I codes with Washington State Building and Fire Code amendments. Updated code language will allow for automatic amendments when Washington State codes are adjusted, as Washington State is constantly making adjustments as needed to the international There are minor changes to most of the codes. We went over that at our last meeting, so we'll go over that quickly. As you saw, our aging infrastructure and stock, our property maintenance code needing to be adopted and updated is vital to making sure that all of these aging buildings are being maintained in a way that keep minimum late life safety criteria. And that is it. So basically, we're taking, changing the 2018 to read 2021 in our municipal code. Any questions?
Are there any questions? I know we had this same presentation earlier. Councilmember Salmore?
I just want to acknowledge, Matthew, that you had an accident, and I'm sorry that happened to you. When I used to work in Renton, one of my coworkers was hit by a bus, and we used to use that term around the office, hit by a bus. It stopped after that happened, because it's just like wildfires, you just never know when it's going to happen, and it's just, and how, you don't know many people that get hit by a bus or hit by a car, so I'm really sorry that happened to you. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that, because that's.
I, I appreciate that, and we, we still use as the nomenclature what happens if one of us gets hit by a car. Thankfully, because we do utilize that, we have an amazing team that we do work together, and there is nothing that is siloed. Kristi and I work very close together with the rest of our team, so if one of, something does happen to one of us, there's not a, a piece of information that only one of us knows. So thankfully, or even during that, our production, our ability to serve the public was not hindered by my time being out. So that's a great statement to Kristi and the amazing team at CED, that we didn't skip a beat with me being out, except for the adjustment of this code.
He's getting around to it now.
Yeah, and Mayor, just before we move on, I want to acknowledge that Mayor Protim Wall joined at 8:16 Pacific Standard Time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so any, so any questions before we go and open up the, okay, so, Councilmember Ryan, would you like to open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the ordinance amending the Mount Lake Terrace municipal code to reflect the 2021 building codes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Then we have to vote to get it open. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearing is now open. Do we have any, any written comments or any, any?
No one signed up to give public testimony in person or online, and there was no written public testimony.
All right. Okay, so does anyone have any questions for the staff? If not, then we can go ahead and close the public hearing.
I move to close public, public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. All opposed? All right, so public hearing is now closed, and is there a motion? There are no, no more questions, so now we can go to a motion, too.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I might need some guidance on my wording, because I don't know how specific I need to be on this, but I'll say I'd like to make a motion to pass the amendment to the Mount Lake Terrace municipal code to reflect the 2021 building codes, and that's building and fire codes. I don't know if I have to go into Title 15 or?
No, you don't, just move to adopt.
Okay, so I just moved to adopt.
Yep. Second.
Is it moved and seconded to adopt this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? So this is now passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, now, next is a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protim, members of council, a couple of things to mention tonight. We have nine applications so far for the open city council seat. The period, or the application window for that closes on March 11th at 4:00 PM, and March, March 11th is next Tuesday at 4:00 PM. So see if we have any more people interested in, in that position. I also wanted to acknowledge that Sound Community Bank is going to be performing a park cleanup in Terrace Creek Park as part of their community involvement on March 15th, and that's the same day that the Ivy League is going to be at Evergreen, doing the same type of thing. So that's great to see, and we appreciate that. On March 18th, that is a week from tomorrow, we'll see the bridge delivered for the trail in Veterans Creek Park, so that'll be exciting to have that come in, and getting, continuing work on the, the trail through Veterans Park. And had a great event last night as part of the community academy. They'll have another event next Wednesday, and that's the same night that I will be here in this room for Terrace Talk, be talking about a couple of different things, including asset management and code compliance, and taking questions from, from our community, if there are any. Second to last, because we had the presentation this evening from South County Fire, also wanted to mention that next week, next Thursday, we'll be doing the annual training for wildfire smoke for our, members of our team that work outside on a regular basis, and make sure that they're protected when dealing with wildfires. Lastly, don't forget to change your clocks, Sunday. That's all I have, and happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So next would be the city council liaison reports, and I'm just going to go with the people that's here. I don't think that council member, I mean, Mayor Protim Wall wants to give a report from, so. You wanted to be first? Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. It's the beginning of the month, so I don't have anything to report until next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, the 22nd, had the opportunity to attend with some of the DEI commissioners, the comedy show, I bring that up because, one, it serves our students in the Edmund School District, but equally as important, one of our DEI, actually, two of our DEI are very heavily networked in, of course, the, the main person and then the behind-the-scenes person, so I'll just leave it at that. On the 23rd, the next day, I was able to join the city along with the Snohomish Health Department. They had a community conversation, mixed language, multi-language, I should say. I paused to just say how exciting that was for a lot of different reasons, but in particular, it was a reminder how awesome our community is. A number of folks probably didn't know, because you might not be Blues fans, but we actually had Little Bill in the room, giving his feedback on what it's been like to live in our community, and that's Little Bill in the Blue Notes. If you don't know who that is, I've just hipped you to somebody you should go ahead and look up. But again, it was just really exciting to see the complexity that was in the room and the diversity that was in that room, really just to give their take on how this city is doing, and then, of course, there was a Health Department collaboration, so that was wonderful to see as well. On the 25th, I was able to finally join an Economic Alliance coffee chat, and it was very depressing, much like the one that was here. I, I'll just leave it there, I rather didn't go too deep into it, but no, later that night, I had an uplifting evening, which is a group that I helped organize, the African-American Leaders in Professional Network. We had our 10th meeting, which is a little over a year and a half, a meeting every other month, which has just been exciting. We're a group now of about 120-plus folks who identify as Black in positions of influence. The next day, speaking of Black people, on the 26th, I had the opportunity to join a subset of that group that was called 100 Black Men in Action. It was their first opportunity to come together, and the goal there is to work with our youth. Folks may not know this, but when you look at suicide rates, African-American youth has been on the rise, if not the fastest growing, and it's not a category you want to be ever associated with, let alone be leading. So that's just folks coming together to see if there's a way to bring that group I mentioned the night before, together with the kids in our community. That same night, had the honor of watching our city staff knock it out of the park with their first community academy meeting. It was just exciting to be in the room, it was wonderful conversations. I, all things considered, I was just in the room to show my support, which is to say that I will not come to the rest of those, so you all have the freedom to just be yourselves, but it was an honor to see you in action, and of course, that first day, you talked about us, so it made sense to be there. And then the next day, on the 27th, I have, of course, we were together for the study session, but then I also had my first opportunity to join the finance committee meeting, so I'll just leave that there, to say that that was a lot of learning going on, but we'll keep that going, and I'll give some actual reports down the road. That was really just us getting to know each other and how we're going to proceed. That next morning, actually, I saw the things on the table there. I'm kind of borrowed yours. I may not have seen these, I don't know if you saw this or not, these are from the Foundation for Edmund School District Breakfast. I thank you for the city staff who were able to join us, and I believe there's some council members that were there as well. I had the honor of serving as the caller during the raise the. I had the honor of serving as the caller during the Raise the Paddle. If I were to say how that went, I would say it wasn't as successful as we had hoped, but it was a wonderful gathering, a lot of energy in the room, and just, you know, is what it is. So in that regard, it was an honor to be there. I think you know I serve on their foundation board, so I had the opportunity to address the group. Wrapping this up, yesterday, I had the opportunity to, for the first time, have a one-on-one with our representative of the city at the Snohomish County level, council level, with Jared Mead. So I just had coffee with him, and he was very excited. He'll be asking you all, in particular, next time he's together with you, about the Community Academy. They are trying to do something like that themselves at the next level, and we're just excited to hear what we were doing. And it really was just a chance to talk, and I see him out in the community, but we've never had a chance to sit and talk about, well, what are you doing for my city and what can we do from our city to help the county? Then to wrap this up completely, and this is an offer to the table here, which is I had for the first time the opportunity to literally walk inside the Linwood Neighborhood Center. You would be amazed how much growth has already happened. Of course, you recall, we've invested in that on behalf of our residents, so that is our building, which is my way of saying we're doing walking tours, and if that is of interest to us, council, we can make that happen. So just putting that in front of you as something to think about. And then lastly, in the spirit of these jobs are often very thankless, you get, you know, this, that, or the other communications, but every so often, you'll get a really nice one out of nowhere, which is a thank you card. I got a thank you card from a gentleman that I actually met on one of our trips to Olympia. Just a brief encounter. He was Bloodworks Northwest, a donor. He was down there with one of their people, Juan Cota, who has been in the news quite a bit. They're trying to get your blood type on the driver's license. I just say that to say if that sounds of interest to you, get your people to vote yes on that. But I just really wanted to pause and tell him thank you. Very unexpected. Every so often, we get those from our residents, and so to get one from outside of the residents or outside of the city was unexpected but appreciated. And of course, he was just thanking us and the council for the long hours that we put in that I've made longer by this report. No, nobody's laughing? Okay, into my report.
Okay, thank you. House Member Salmore?
Thank you. My boards are next Tuesday, so I have left one in Park and Rec.
Thank you. All right. Well, Mayor Protam Wall, if you do have anything to say, this is your chance now before I go.
Pass until next meeting.
All right, thank you. Okay, so on my report, on the 21st, I also attended the comedy show with our DEI council member, not council, commissioner, Kermit Appio. And yeah, there were quite a few Mount Lake Terrace residents there, so it was really great. And then on the 23rd, I also attended the library conversation with our Snohomish County Health District. And I just want to say that Mr. Engelhardt, Bill, has performed at many Tour de Terrace events as music. And then on the 24th, we had our Snohomish County Mayor's meeting, and that's all the Snohomish County mayors. And on the 26th, I attended the Linwood State of the City, very, very well attended, very, very well done. And they have a lot going on in their city, but it's very similar to what we're doing in many, many ways, too. Also, and that evening, I attended the first Mount Lake Terrace Academy. And it's just amazing that people came and they learned and they had fun, and then I'll go on to the next one, too. But it's just, I think it's such a great service that we're doing so that people really understand how a city is run and get to know, they're not going to learn everything, but they're going to get to know the surface of a lot of different things, and so we'll have informed citizens out there. And then on the 27th, I had my one-on-one with our city manager and Brian Wall, our Mayor Protam. And on the 4th, I attended the Conservation Futures Meeting, and we are now probably going to be giving out the money every other year. But we're going to skip this year, we're going to do next year, and then, and that way, we'll have a little bit more to give away. Because our monies are now, we don't have as much as we did before. And we can do, we can do more with a little bit more, so that's, we're going to do it every other year. On the 5th, I attended the South County Mayor's meeting, and we meet for lunch in person once a month, and we really do exchange a lot of ideas and what are we doing in our city, how we're doing certain things. And we, this group of mayors, our South County mayors, really, really respect each other, and we have a lot of fun. And we are, we're laughing a lot, and we're just, and we're covering some very, very important subjects like fire and police and the jail and so on and so forth. But we also just have a lot of fun as we're talking about the things that we do in our city, especially with Edmonds and what they're going through. And then on the 5th, I attended the, oh, and then the South County mayors, it was Mount Lake Terrace's turn to host it, and so we met at Gates and Ty. And I think that's great because now we're learning about all the other different cities, and we're not going to the same place every single time and so forth. So I can now show off the various restaurants in our city, and I'm learning about Moco To and other cities. And that, and last night, I attended the second Citizens Academy. And I mean, I can't believe how much fun the staff is having to teach, because every group has a different way of teaching it, and to have a game show as part of it, and people are learning that way. They're, and I was learning things I either had forgotten or didn't even know, so it was really an amazing thing. And people are laughing and having fun learning, so good job, you guys. And then the, and then this afternoon, I attended the Community Transit Meeting, and that's the end of my report. Okay. So next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? All right. If there's no new business, we're going to adjourn the meeting. We're adjourned. Thank you. An hour and 40 minutes.